We've got a couple of people that need to go first. First, though, for the approval of the agenda, are there any amendments? I do have two things. We'll add E under approval of SPOLOST. It's the TAK, T-A-C-K distributor. Billy told me what that was, but I wasn't hearing TAK. It took me a while to figure out. It's the tar distributor thing from roads. Anyway, and then also just a number 12 for fire services agreement. We need to talk about that at the request of one of our commissioners.
So I need to add one under board appointments.
Board appointment.
For a water board member.
Oh, yes, okay. Just will add that as F. What you got? Water board, you say?
Yeah, water board, yes.
You really were on your way.
I was.
We've got a water board appointment under number four. We've got the TAK distributor under number five. And then number 12, fire services agreement. All right, we're going to also reorganize the agenda just a little bit. Alex's case has got to go to a meeting in Fort Payne and be there by seven. So number 11 is election facility plans. And so I want to ask Alex to come up and talk to us about the election plans.
Last month, we reported or kind of executive reported, we were out for final adjustments in our first revision that we run across with the elections board. As you all have sat down with us individually and looked at these, some of the electrical plans had changed for the number of voting machines to the circuits, breakers that was needed with the UPSs that you see stacked out here. So we had to make a little revision for that on the main floor where the system will be. And as we grow in the future, that there's enough circuits to add more voting machines based on population of precinct, which Trenton's the biggest precinct. Also, inside the storage area, where, you know, we're going to set all seven precincts up, where the elections board and workers will be able to get everything ready, we had to do the same thing in there, to divide it up. We learned that these UPSs have to be turned on certain times, charged. You know, the big election, the big voting machine that does the ballots has to be charged so often, so we want to make sure of that. Took a little while to get that changed. And we also worked on verifying that the, have an automatic transfer switch in there to run the main floor during elections in case something happens. So that's one of the things that we have to do is while we're using this South Dade community safe room for the elections. And eventually, if they do want to move to Davis, we do have generator backup, automatic start for them. That's what we're going to also have at the elections facility to be able to move one of our portable 100K generators that we have in EMA. That would be designated for that day during elections. Want to make sure that that was ready and that everything in the main voting floor, ballot count server room and all that is taken care of with that generator. And would work with the current connections that we have on the generators throughout for water, sewer and now any building that we need, keep it the same camp plot. We did get the final revisions back and it's ready to go out. And we're ready to start that process. If we want to do the lock and key type with general contractor to do that. It's a very basic finishes inside, kind of like what we have here. Same type doors, same type windows, everything. All that's within the finishes on the finish plane. Our method architecture, Thomas Barto is the one that is there. OLG engineering, Oliver Little and Gibson is our mechanical, electrical plumbing. Electrical structural was done by back structural. So we have a full set of stamps, what y'all seen in that, limited were stamped drawings, but it was just for review. And then before found some of those issues with electrical. They sent us a specific sheet. Took us a little bit more time for Tony Gibson, which is the electrical engineer, to finish that out. So if y'all are ready, we're ready to start getting that out to an RFP or an RFQ to do a lock and key type system, kind of like what we managed with the historic courthouse. That's what y'all's plans are, to see where we are. We gotta, somebody's got to get it and get it out there and see what it's.
All right, y'all have any questions? So basically, what we're talking about is just getting the plans out to contractors, let them bid on the job.
But we're shooting for just a general contractor that oversee the whole project.
Okay, yep.
That's what y'all would like to do. And that's, I guess that's been some of the talk when we all met, if y'all want a lock and key, kind of like example of the management company that done our historical courthouse. They would manage, they would go out, take that, get all the quotes and come back with everything for us, plus the management.
Well, when I say contractor, I mean, they'll, they're the contractor of the whole thing.
Get the subs, yes.
They do it.
I think that's fine because it's a new construction. It's not like the historic where you really have to pay attention to.
It's like coal.
Pay attention to the details, but you.
It's like coackens. We need to have a job superintendent there every day, making sure things are done, followed the specs and things are done, taken care of.
Okay.
The only thing I would ask is when we do the bid, just put a timeframe on it from start to completion.
Or ask them to give us a timeframe or project schedule.
A day, a length of time and then.
So what, we can put it out and have a pre-bid meeting or a pre-meeting, they can come in and look at it and ask questions. But we're going to give electronic sets of plans, because the sets that we got was about 600 bucks. Have it printed out. I know a lot of people like to see them. We sat down with them and a few of them are out here for folks. But it still, we'll give them electronic set of that. Even the civil drawings as well, too. We still have a few little bit of civil things to finish up, once it's done for the permanent rock coffers and the things to slowly let the retention pond down.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
We'll start working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
All right, thank you all.
All good, thank you.
Also, we're going to move number nine, coroner day of remembrance. Courtney Gross and her team, come on up, Courtney. Or maybe not her team, maybe it's just the coroner.
Yeah, it's just me.
That's right.
He's welcome to come speak. Okay, hi guys, hey everybody. I'm Courtney Gross, I am your coroner for Dade County. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I wanted to talk to you guys and tell the community about event that we are hosting on June 7th. It's going to be the first time we've ever hosted this event. It's called the Dade County Day of Remembrance. This is a new event that I'm hoping that we can host every year on the same first Saturday in June, is my goal. It's going to begin at 10:00 AM, but really what this is about, it's an opportunity for family members to get together with the community and see what resources we have available for the community for those that are grieving or have lost loved ones throughout the year. Since I've been in this role now going on, I guess, six years, I've learned a lot, grown a lot, and I've really had an opportunity to see what the needs are, especially when it comes to death in the community. And that's something a lot of people aren't really comfortable with and aren't necessarily comfortable with asking for help. So I wanted to have an event where all those resources would be in one location, where we could have grief share, where we could have compassionate friends, veterans services, local funeral homes, everyone available, so you can come in and we'll celebrate the lives, the beautiful lives that many of these people lived, but also give people an opportunity to make connections, so it can help grow them and breathe through this process. We plan on having light hors d'oeuvres, not hors d'oeuvres, that's a fancy word, but light snacks. We plan on giving out small gifts of, we're still working on that piece here, light gifts. I'm going to have a wildflower flower theme, so I plan on giving out all the families, some forget-me-nots, so they have something that they can take home, memorable, something tangible that they can take home. This, like I said, this is new. I plan on using all kinds of local community resources, so if y'all have any ideas, they're on my way. We plan on having multiple tables, we're doing it in the historic courthouse. In the upstairs, we plan on having multiple tables set up around the room with the resources available for people to go and visit. Also at this, I'm going to be releasing my bereavement resource guide. And I know that's probably not very exciting for a lot of people. I've been working on this book for quite some time now, and we finally got it together. Here he's working on the final edit of it, and then we're going to get it printed. And this is going to be a guide that I'm going to be able to, me, my other coroners, are going to be able to give out to families at the time of death of a loved one. That's a chaotic time, it's a scary time, and, you know, they don't, families don't always remember everything we're telling them in that moment. And oftentimes, we'll look at the question like, what do we do next? So this is just a guide to help them get through those next trying days and kind of help answer those questions and fill in the gaps. So this will be that moment where I'm going to have it up there, where at the historic courthouse, where people can get the book, we'll go over the book. I'm hoping to have some local leaders come in and speak with the families, do like a slideshow and stuff like that. So that is my plan.
The American Legion will need, I know the, I know the room up there well. In their front, we need one table.
Okay.
Okay? You're going to do that, we'll handle it from there, okay?
Okay, we will have it, not a problem. Do you have any questions? I hope all you guys can come out and support it, I'm excited for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney, appreciate you. That'll be a really good event. All right, at this time, we'll begin at number two, approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? All the commissioners been given those minutes in advance for review. Hearing that, I'll add that to the consent agenda. We'll have the review of the personal status report. Whether there's any major changes there, of course, the jail always has a few changes here and there, but overall, no major change. Any questions? Hearing that, we'll add that to consent agenda. Under board appointments and proclamations, we have this month, the Respect for Law Joint Proclamation, and that's with the Trenton Dade Optimist Club. And I see some optimist here, so we thank y'all for being here. And so the Respect for Law, I'm going to turn to that because that's coming up, that's a big day in Dade County, that's next Tuesday. And basically, this is a day that will recognize several different people in our law enforcement neighborhood. The Trenton Dade Optimist Club recognizes the need to honor the sacrifice and service of our Georgia State Patrol, Dade County Sheriff's deputies, Trenton Police Department, Georgia Bureau of Investigation, Georgia Department of Public Safety Motor Carrier Compliance Division officers, and the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Wildlife Division officers. This is a joint proclamation between Dade County and the city. There will be an event held this coming Tuesday at 12:00 noon at the court facility. So everyone's invited, everyone in Dade County is invited to attend that. And I understand we do have a video presentation, not tonight, but at that event from Governor Kemp. So it was kind of him to do that for us. I'll just go through all these. We have a proclamation for Foster Care Month for the month of May 2025, where we recognize this for the DFACS, primarily DFACS area of Dade County. And right now, there are 18 children and youth in foster care being provided safe, secure and stable homes in Dade County.
Just 18?
Just 18 today. Yep, it was 22 last year, so that's a, that's a good thing. We also recognize the National Day of Prayer. Today technically is the National Day of Prayer, May the 1st. We also will have some ceremonies alongside that for tomorrow, but just remember that in our country's history. Also, we're celebrating and recognize veterans past and present by celebrating Armed Forces Day, which is the third Saturday of May. It's my understanding that tomorrow in Chattanooga, they're having an Armed Forces Day Parade, something that, there's very few of those left in the country, but that's a pretty big deal. So just remember Armed Forces Week around May the 17th, it's the third Saturday of May specifically. And then we also have here tonight several people from the Alliance for Dade recognizing National Travel and Tourism Week 2025 proclamation. So we appreciate y'all being here, and we'll have a little report here shortly from Sandy regarding that. Do you want to do that now, or you want to do it at the meeting? Well, come on and do it right now if you want to. Is that going to show up in the back? Or should we wait? Okay.
Thank you for letting me come.
Yes.
And this is my normal report, but it has a little bit of additional things for, for this timeframe. Okay? We'll go out, we'll do our social media reach first. We have 267,243 reached on Facebook, followers 3,400, page views 502, 502,000. Reach for Instagram is 90,437, and followers for Instagram is 501. Our Welcome Center stats, residents was, were 237 this past month in April. Lots of people are coming in to see the courthouse. We had 91 visitors and 68 phone calls. There are the Small Business Development Center upcoming webinars. There are others, if you click on the link, then you can find out what all is available in May. And please, it's time for your vote from now to May 5th. The Groovy Nomad, one of our local businesses, was, was the winner last year of the Reader's Choice Award for Best Roadside Motel. They are in the running again for this year. And we will be participating in J-Fest this year on May 17th. For anybody who is interested in going to that event, you do get a 25% discount if you use the promo code DAY25. And last month was National Lyman's Appreciation Month, so we want to appreciate the Lyman and all that they do for our community. This coming week is National Tourism Week, May 4th through 10th. And these are some numbers of the impact on the US economy of tourism. The next slide is the state economy. And then the final slide is the local economy. There are around 1,135 jobs that are tourism related here in Dade County with equally more than $2.6 million. Dade County has generated over $101,503,801 in tax revenues associated with tourism spending and has saved residents, almost $200 per household of taxes generated through tourism expenditure. And then, oh, if it will play. Well, I had an, I had an ad that we, a 30-second ad that we're now playing on Channel 9 for you, but obviously, technology's not working for us tonight, so. But coming up, you can be a tourist in your own hometown again this year. We have an adventure into fund passport that's available at our event, our tourism event on May 10th, which is called Destination Dade Travel and Tourism Trade Show. It will be upstairs in the courthouse. And there will be local attractions and shops and all kinds of good things to find out about things to see and do in Dade County. Even if you're local, you may not realize what all there is to do. And there's some new businesses in town that are tourism related, so you need to come check it out. We'll have some door prizes and some other giveaways, and so it'll be a good event. It'll be from 2:00 to 5:00 on May 10th. Other events happening, the Celebration of Hope is coming up this weekend. And then next week is the Ken Light, Ken Light Visual for Awareness for Mental Health. That's on the 8th. Also on the 8th is the Celebrating Moms Night, Ladies Night Out at Shop on Main. Bank Dade is having their Free Community Shred Day on the 10th. And then also on the 10th, that morning will be mingle on the square. Had a really good turnout last Saturday for the first mingle and for the farmer's market. And because of that, we had 52 people who came in to the courthouse from that event. And so lots of locals and lots of visitors as well. Also, with that event, of course, theirs is from 10:00 to 1:00, then our event's from 10, from 2:00 to 5:00, and then that evening from 6:00 to 10:00 is the second Saturday cruise in. So lots going on that next weekend. Coming up after that, on the 17th, we have another cruise in, car show and cornhole tournament, the Spring Fling for Hand Up Ministries. And then also, Entertainers has their second annual car show on the 24th, and that is for a cause. We do have the Cornerstone Gallery and Gift Shop open now, and we'd love to see you. If you need any information from us, you can call us, stop by, or visit our website, which is brand new. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good report. So that is the National Travel and Tourism Week this week. So when there objection, I'll add all those proclamations to the consent agenda. Now we'll have Phillip, if you want to talk to us about Water and Sewer Authority Board Member Appointment.
So my board member, Tim Fowler, he is, they have purchased a house in the valley, so now they're out of district. So me and him talked, I want to thank him for his time, served on the board, he done a really good job. I have contacted Cliff Almond, his name is Roger Almond, but everybody knows him as Cliff. I would like to appoint him as my board member to sit on the water board at this time, if everybody's okay with that.
What's his last name?
Almond, A-U-M-A-N.
He leads the Masonic Lodge.
Yes.
He's a good man.
Known Cliff a long time, and maybe he's known me a long time. I don't know one or the other, and he was dead, too. So are you Roger Almond Jr. or the third?
Third.
Fourth?
Fourth.
All right. That's right. All right, so we have, and is that for an unexpired term or a new term?
That's for the reminder of.
Okay, okay. All right, so I don't have the dates on that, but we can look that up during the break. And, okay, so we have Roger Cliff the Fourth or Cliff Almond to fulfill the unexpired term on the Water and Sewer Authority, and that's for, I don't know what district it is, but Sand Mountain District.
District 2.
District 2, all right. All right, thank you very much. Discussion?
Fully support that nomination, no doubt.
I do, too. I think it's a great choice.
Add that to consent agenda for approval, thank you. We have Paula DuVall, come on up. This is for under SPOLOST. We've got the mobile assessor equipment and license.
Good evening. I do have some, a little more information. Mobile assessor is basically a digital version of the records we have on our system in office. This would be used by our field team. They would receive an iPad that is synced with our camera system that we use in office, so that everything that they would normally do with paper, with pencil, with camera, with, you know, things like that, it can all be done live on the iPad. Everything they do out in the field is done live, and it automatically updates to the computer in the office. I've been here since 2006, and we've always used laptops. Laptops are becoming very hard to keep updated, very hard to travel with, very hard to maintain and updated. So we are requesting this new mobile, it's not new, it's, it's used in several counties in Georgia, the mobile assessor program. It basically could take pictures out in the field, we don't need camera. We can do sketching out in the field, they can do everything they would do paper-wise, because what they have to do now, they have to set their schedule for where they're going to go for the day, go out, take the pictures, do the sketching, and they come back in the office, then they have to take time to do the sketching, to upload the photos, or any other information that they found out in the field. So it takes a little more time to do it that way, so this will cut down a lot of time. It would give them more time in the field, so that they don't have to go out and then have two hours, they have to come back in to get all the other stuff done. So the original cost, because we are doing it before July, the upfront cost is going to be $12,309. And then after that, each year, there is a maintenance fee, which is $3,580, and that would come out of our regular budget. But upfront, for the upfront cost, for the iPad, the training, the software, the uploads, everything like that, we are asking for that under SPOLOST, that's $12,309. This also for the computer that I use in the office, they will sync that lap, or that iPad with my computer, so I can see where they are, I can see what's been done, you know, and there's, it's an amazing program, and I think it would really benefit our office.
Oh, what was the annual renewal cost?
There's not a renewal.
Well, no, yearly, what was it?
$3,508. And that's for one license. Since we only have one lead appraiser, field appraiser, that's one license, and then my computer in my office.
So the $3,580, will that come out at all this year, or will that just be next year?
Yeah.
So it'll be FY '27's budget, actually.
Well, I personally had that job at one point, and that would be extremely amount of time cut off. So I think that's, I think it's fantastic.
So you were an assessor at one time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Level two.
Yeah. I don't even know what that means. Good for you.
Yeah.
I mean, everything else, we're up to par technologically, except for this area.
Yeah, yeah, that's fantastic.
So I think it's time we bring it up technologically for our field team.
Okay. Especially you're running off of one field agent, so it's, yeah, it'd be tremendous.
All right, let's go. So we heard from one, too. Anything from the other two commissioners? Do you like to?
I'm good with him.
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable, all right. Well, then Paula, we shall add that to the consent agenda for approval, and that is from Data Cloud Solutions for $12,309, correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have the next item in here is for purchase of a vehicle. Stacy, are you here? Come on up. There's two bids for a truck, and you want to tell us about your current truck?
The current truck? I'll invite anybody to go for a ride with me. You have to hold the.
You have to hold the shifter up and get it in the right spot before it starts. The back main leaks. I put four starters on it in five years. It's got 270,000 miles on it.
That's all?
The road department gave it up five years ago, six years ago. Yeah, so anybody's welcome to go drive.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, Don's been in it one time.
Yeah, well, I've been in it more than once, but I don't make a habit of it.
I have two bids. The third, well, I contacted the three that's on here and one more Ford dealership. One, they kept wanting more paperwork, and we just didn't give that out. The one from Marshall Myers, I have a copy of his email on here, in there, where he just said he couldn't do it, he couldn't find one. It's just a plain truck, extended cab, four-wheel-drive, F-150.
F-150 four-wheel-drive super, super cab XL.
Yeah, it's extended cab.
All right, all right. And we've got a bid, $42,506.84 from Moss Motor.
Yes.
And that's out of South Pittsburgh. And then Prater Ford gave a bid of $44,351.
Yes.
Any questions?
Have we dealt with either of these in purchasing vehicles before?
We have Calhoun. I don't know about Moss, I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we bought many, many vehicles from Prater. In fact, he almost always wins the bid, but he didn't win it last month, and apparently, not this month either, so.
Moss is closer than Calhoun, if that makes it. It's in South Pittsburgh.
Is there any kind of warranty or things on this?
I did not price an extended warranty, I gotta have that added.
All right.
I'm putting quite a few miles on that old truck.
I know what a locking rear end, but that's not essential.
The four, that comes standard with a V8 engine, it's got a locking rear end. So if you get in the mud, which if I have to go up and check on loggers or whatever, it just locks the rear ending.
Does that come on both of them? Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Any preferences? We're going to go with the low bid, or what do you, what do you want?
I'm good with the low bid.
Okay.
Me too.
All right. Okay, we'll go with Moss Motor Company out of South Pittsburgh for $42,506.84 on this F-150 four-by-four super cab. Thank you very much, Stacy. We'll add that to consent agenda. Purchase of equipment, the next thing here is for a unit. And it's got several different bids and information, it's under 5C. We got a bid for, okay, what this is, is there's a very large unit. If you go out our main entrance out to the left, by the end of the building here. It's 24 years old. It's the oldest unit we have in Dade County, and it finally gave up the ghost. I thought it was still working, I reported on the radio this morning it was still working, but it actually has, they've been stringing it along for about a year. It's not been horrible downstairs, because it's back underground, this port, this particular unit, the way it, where it heats and cools, it's almost underground, so it's not been unbearable. But Paula worked on defects once upon a time. What that happens is that when the dehumidification doesn't happen, it really builds up a humidification problem. And so they keep dehumidifiers running 24/7. In fact, there's three that run all the time. Well, they put off heat, you know, just naturally. And so, anyway, it is gone out, and it's a very large unit. We got a bid from Callahan for $41,671. Jake Marshall, $38,937. And our local bid is Reeves', and they came in on the low bid at $33,566. So that is a 10-ton unit with three-phase, I think three-phase power to be replaced. It does include a five-year compressor warranty.
Yeah, may I have that?
Any questions? Okay.
The, who are we, who are you thinking we're going with?
Reeves.
Okay, what about, I guess the question will be, I know they're in the process of changing refrigerant, so we need to check and see, I mean, I'm assuming the unit's out now? Downstairs?
It is out.
It's done?
Yeah.
That would be my only question, is about the refrigerant, because I'm, they're in the process of changing that again.
Okay.
What are you asking of them?
If it's going to be the new refrigerant, if the old refrigerant, or how long we'd have to wait to get one with the new refrigerant.
Oh, okay, and the, okay.
Yes. That's what I was looking at, this one, Reeves is a carrier.
I would think Reeves would know that.
Yeah, I'll just have to check with them, but we can.
Yeah, I'll just call and ask him.
All right. So.
They're pretty up to date on.
Yeah, yeah, I want to go with the low bid, $33,566.
Yes, I'd like to keep it local if we could.
Sure, me too.
Agreed.
And they're a good company.
We'll add that to consent agenda, and we will check on the top of refrigerant for it. Next item is the transfer station. We talked about this, we've put some home, and what this is, is security cameras for the recycling center in the transfer station. We did put some cameras down there a few years ago. They were kind of homegrown type system to save money, and didn't work well. And hit and miss, they sometimes work, sometimes don't work. And so we had a little situation this past Saturday where someone decided to cuss one of our employees out, I don't know how else to put it, over being over the six-bag limit. And this is one of the finest gentlemen in Dade County.
Ah, geez, that's crazy.
And so, I mean, he works every Saturday of his life for us, and he's just a good guy. And, but, you know, it rolled off of him, but it didn't roll off so easy off of his son, who got on Facebook and did a little bit of talking. So anyway, signage is one thing, we've already addressed the signage issue. We've got those ordered this week, they'll be posted inside. We all had signage, but it was, they're, they're older, so we've got some new signs going up that we'll do a marvelous job of explaining everything. And then we'll also have some other signs made that's going to go on the, along the outside of the fence. So there's no doubt they'll be able to tell and read what the, our rules and regulations are for entering and, and the limitations on the eight bags per day. And it, just because it's eight bags, you can still bring in more, you just have to go across the scale, and that was where the rub was the other day, anyway. But this is a security camera package from Intech. We've used Intech primarily, pretty much universally, throughout all of our buildings and all of our county for many, many years. And these top cameras can be tied into the Vigilance System. And if Alex was here, he could tell you what all that means. But anyway, it's just a, it's a system that, it's a vigilance surveillance system. And so the cost is $21,350, and I would highly recommend that we do it.
I do too.
So you've got it, looking at the things, you've got it upstairs in the, in the, in the building up on top of the hill?
It's all three buildings, and there's pictures there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, demonstrate that. It's, it'll be the front and back of the scale house, the recycling center, and the top building.
Okay.
And we are approaching, Phillip brought this up earlier, asked me about it. We are approaching, or actually over-budget in that area of transfer station. We do need to address that soon, and so this is not going to push us over. We've got, the money's there, it's just we need to reallocate the SPOST funds at some point, for budget purposes. We're going to have to do a budget alignment anyway, coming up here after the end of the year, the fiscal year. So we do need to do that, and that's agreed upon, but, but this is for security of our employees, and, because I couldn't tell you who it was, or the tag number, or anything else. And at the time, it's, you know, heated, they didn't think about getting tag numbers.
Well, it happens more than, I mean, that sounds like a bad example, but it does happen more than that. I try to go down and walk, walk around whenever I can, but it's, you know, there's a lot of people sometimes not happy about a lot of different things.
Looks to be able to help with Tennessee, Alabama tags that come in.
That's exactly what I was thinking about.
It will, it can track it. It will. And he does his best he can.
Yeah.
You know, to limit that. And, you know, if you're out of state, there is this price for out-of-state.
Yeah, you can still.
There's a fee. I think it's 70 right now, it goes to 75 on July 1st per ton, so.
Yeah, but that, that breathes easier than it is, because you pull in there, you know, you're in the far right-hand lane, you're not going across the way, you just pull around, right? You know, and he might be doing something in the building.
Right.
He's not, he's not going to be able to track that.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to re, redesign that in some ways, but we just.
And a lot of times trustees do help us a lot down there, and if they were to say anything to an individual, it just opened, that even gets worse, so. They typically don't, they might report it to the employee, and the employee can handle it, but, you know. And there's, sometimes there's legitimate cases where someone has a Tennessee or Alabama tag, they have a Georgia, they have a Dade County driver's license. They just have a business vehicle that they're driving, and so it's, you know, it's legit, it's all good. So there are situations that's warranted.
Yeah, and from the review that we did on that, just because I'm kind of the one that reports on all that, there was not a significant amount of loss from, like, at all in the garbage section. So there definitely is not an overamount of people coming from other counties.
Well, that's good to know, yeah.
Yeah, so that was, that was good news to me, because I know that's always a big complaint.
So we have a bid for $21,350. Any questions?
So while we're talking about that, is this a, is this an item that the more you do, the cheaper it gets? Because the reason I'm asking, in October of 2023, we talked about surveillance cameras at the sports complex as well. We actually suspected of spending on RFP, but that's not been done, or we did it and did something happen there. So I just wonder, does it get any cheaper the more you do?
I think it is what it is, per, per camera, it really is. Like, if we added cameras on this project, it's just more, it's just more. Yeah. But we do need to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
And when we do the sports complex, you know, you know, we just, we just approve some additional buildings and stuff down there, so we, you know, we'd have to include them too.
We had an incident that happened back then with a, an individual where a car chased a girl into the parking lot, and I think there was some altercation.
Yeah.
So that's what's brought, brought that on, so I just wondered if we could do it at the same time. But if it doesn't make any difference, we'll have to just redo the, a bid on the sports complex.
Yeah, we need to, we can work on that for next month. Any other questions? All right, we'll add that to the consent agenda. Again, that's for $21,350 for a Vigilance System Surveillance System from Intech, that's Integrated Network Technologies. And then the last thing under SPOST was added at tonight's meeting. Billy took a trip, he tried to get two of our commissioners to go, but I'm glad y'all didn't go, because Billy went all the way, ugh, where was it, y'all?
Asheville.
Asheville.
Asheville, Lincolnon, North Carolina. And it was way up there, but he went up to see where they manufacture this called Tac distributor. And he was, he said, he called me and was excited, said, "This is exactly what we need." He, he said, and he talked to, I think, most of y'all today, so if y'all want to chime in, the alternative was going to be like almost a quarter of a million-dollar type vehicle. But with this, this piece of equipment, he's able to continue to pave our roads, and it distributes the tar and the whatever. So he's got it down to a price of $75,937.50. Freight is $1,600, but he said he could go back and pick it up. He wasn't going to give anybody $1,600. Now, it took him 12 hours today to get there, but that's okay. If he wants to go back up and get it and bring it back, I'm happy for him. And so he thinks he can do that, and he will do that. So that will say that it's quoted at $76,037.50, but he says he can, he got them down to $75,937.50. If you ever dealt with Billy, you know he did some, this, this chewing out today, and chewing. All right, so, do y'all want to say anything on that? Because I know he talked to somebody else. He told, he asked me to ask y'all to tell Bob what it is, because he tried to tell me, and I was like, anyway.
We got a truck and a pump, I'm assuming the pump or part of it broke, broke down. And we thought we was going to be able to buy one from a company, they had to use one. But when they sold the company, the new company wouldn't allow them to, they had to auction it off. So we were thinking we were going to get a truck for about $25,000 or $30,000, and that's what killed the deal, that's why this come up at the last minute. The other option is, if we don't buy this, would be to let Tally or somebody come in, and they would charge us about $1,000 a day to do that.
Same thing.
Same thing, but they'll probably be paving at the same time we are, so then you're at their mercy of them.
Okay.
Tally comes first.
Pardon me?
Tally comes first.
That would be the other company, we would probably call them.
And then if you have rain days or whatever, you schedule your asshole.
And everything gets pushed back, is what you're saying, yeah?
Yeah.
And they're usually already running behind.
All right, so it is, the company's called Lee Boy. Lee Boy, I think is who our paver is with as well, and so, anyway. Do I have a, are y'all in agreement to add this to the consent agenda for approval?
I support it.
Yeah.
He'll be excited to know he gets to go back through traffic. He got up there and found that, forgot that that's where Helene hit, and I-40 was closed. And he got all the way up there and had, so he traveled four hours at 2 miles per hour. And so he was, you know, he was pretty patient, I was surprised. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how Dane came out of this whole deal, but anyway.
There are apps you can use that tell you when roads are going. And, and the next time I see Billy, I'll be sure to point that out.
Okay, he's glad to do that, yeah.
He probably knows how to get there.
Yeah, he'll find a back way next time, I'm sure. All right, so Paula, if you would come back to see us here now. Number six is estimated rollback mileage rate for 2025, the 2025 Notice of Assessment. We, Paul and I sat in a House Bill 92 summary, and some of the commissioners and I were training this past week, and sat in another HB 92. This was a bill that was passed by our legislature this year to help clean up House Bill 581. Paula, did it clean it up?
No. One area, yeah. When House Bill 581 first passed, as far as the floating homestead part, it was total property value, no matter what the acreage was, no matter how many buildings you had on it. Now they've cleaned that up, that it only includes five acres, up to five acres. So that helps. It gets us more in line with what we already have.
Now, I was going to say, that's very, like, what we do, right?
Very similar. It just adds a little bit more building value, because you can add accessories, things like that, so. So that did, we were happy with that. But the estimated rollback rate is, it's going to cause some problems, some confusion. First of all, for this year, it states that any board, the commission, school board, city, if you're going to vote on an estimated rollback rate, which is totally different than the estimated rollback rate you'll do when we do the budget and do the actual little trade. This is totally different, there's no form, there's no, you just estimate a rollback rate and go with it. That's what we put on the notice of assessment. But the law now states you have to have that done 15 days before we send out the notice of assessment. So for this year, we're kind of late, because our goal is to send out assessment notices May the 9th, which is next Friday. Now, the only thing that would hold us up from that is they have yet to officially approve the new notice of assessment. So we're waiting on word from that. If they have not approved that by next Friday, we, we cannot mail out the notice of assessment. Now, let me just show you, give you a general idea of what this new estimated rollback rate is going to do. Because these boards, you don't have to do anything. You don't have to vote on anything, you don't have to certify anything, you can just, i-if you don't, then what happens is what the mileage rate was last year is what will be put on the notice of assessment, and then it would generate an estimated tax, which is what we've always done for the last. And then it would generate an estimated tax, which is what we've always done for the last several years. That's just how that's worked. So if you do an estimated rollback rate, if you certify an estimated rollback rate to tax, to the tax assessor's office. Then that is what's put on the notice of assessment and it does not generate an estimated tax amount. It, it goes through the whole process except for the last step of giving the taxpayer the notice of estimated tax amount. Gives them the tax rate, but not the tax amount. So I have three different notices of assessments here. Because that could be the situation we're facing. Because if the commission certifies a estimated rollback rate, school board does not. That is this one here because you have, this up here is for the entity that did not certify an estimated rollback rate. So their information is here. The entity that did give an estimated rollback rate, their information is going to be down here. This one has no estimated tax amount. This one has an estimated tax amount. So it, it's gonna be a little confusing. Um, and, and it kind of is gonna depend on the commission, the school board, the city as to which notice of assessment taxpayers will see. Um, so that, that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
So that's.
Does the school board been notified of this?
I have not heard anything from the school board. I'm assuming they know about House Bill ninety-two, but they have not reached out to me.
I'll write the chair.
So our question is not is do, if we do nothing, that is one of the scenarios.
That's option two.
If we said we want to.
Then it just goes with last year's mileage rate, just like the notice of assessment's always been. Last year's mileage rate gives you an estimated tax based on the current year.
Right. So it's not to say that you can't increase or decrease the mileage rate.
Correct.
After you do the actual calculation.
That's correct.
Because the problem with this is trying to calculate an estimate based on having nothing to estimate it from.
Yeah.
That's what we don't understand why the state can't get. You know, apparently legislators don't calculate mileage rates. Uh, and I don't know who they're getting their advice from, but it's, it's not easy. It's complicated. Uh, it takes us weeks.
Preliminary numbers. You know, if, if, if we're gonna have to do this in April, if the county commission is gonna have to. If they choose to vote on the estimated rollback rate, you will have to do that in April or a special call meeting sometime in April before we send out our notice of assessment.
Right.
So the only information we're gonna have at that time is very prelim, preliminary. I mean, we're a week from a notice of assessments and I'm still working to make sure everything's right, everything's what we want it to be. Um, so you know, it's a very loose number that, that you're gonna get. Um, so, but that's what they're, that's the new process.
As we're having a hurricane outside. Uh, um, what did you, what would you suggest?
My suggestion?
Yes.
Let it roll with last year's mileage rate. So it looks like the house assessment did every year.
That was gonna be my question. From my understanding, the way this is all works, it's whichever one was best for the property owner. At the time, it was your house and however many acres. Now it's your house and five acres.
Right. Exactly. Yeah.
So in my muddy water opinion of all of this.
Sure.
Ours is still going to be better than the new floating. So ours is really not going to change.
Oh.
Yep, that's exactly right. Because it's what we've, got what we already had.
Yeah. Because this goes off, this will actually increase where ours does not as far as value of the house.
And they'll still, the vendors will still pull the numbers, pull whichever one's most beneficial as far as what's actually on the tax bill. And another thing about this estimated rollback rate, if you do certify a rollback rate, then your actual mileage rate is higher than your estimated rollback rate. You will have to put a statement on the tax bill that the county commission went above the estimated rollback rate.
Uh, we don't want that.
Not really.
If, if you go above it. So.
All right.
Clear as mud.
So I think I'm hearing.
For this year, you're gonna have to. You not really have a choice this year, except for just a little.
Well, I mean, if we did vote to just make it exactly what it was last year.
And, and you don't have to vote.
That's the same thing as not doing anything anyway.
Right.
So, all right. So are we in agreement? Just uh, let it ride?
Yeah, keep going. Yeah.
And while I'm up here, assessment notice, our goal is next Friday. So if, if you don't get a notice of assessment by the end of May, please let us know. If you own property by January first, you know, let us know you didn't get that. We have seen some minor increases. It's not anything like we've seen the last couple of years. Um, so pay attention to your notice of assessment. We do have a website. You can look at your neighbors. You can look at. You can look at sales in your area. There's a whole bunch of information on our website. And then come in and see us, you know. We're more than happy to talk to anybody and let you know where your value came from.
Everybody wants to come see Paula this time of year.
Or not see Paula.
Happy to have you. Happy to have you.
Happy to have you. So we're going to let it ride and, which means actually it'll just, what it was last year will be our. Unofficial estimated calculation without voting on it and saying that.
Sure, maybe they could go to a storm shelter.
Yeah, hopefully we don't need to go to a storm shelter ourselves, but we'll find out here shortly, I suppose. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is storm shelter, community use. Uh, I don't know if it's actually open right now. My ears are actually popping, but anyway, that's not a good sign. So we brought this up last month. Um. And we didn't want to bring, we, you know, we didn't want to vote on anything without having a full board here. I feel like my mic's going in and out. But anyway. Um, on page thirteen of that, there, it deals with evacu, evacuees with aid animals. So I, this is just something for y'all to take again tonight. I don't know how long, if y'all have had this for days, weeks, not had it at all.
They just got it today.
Yeah, I want you to take this and study it because uh, it may be that we do nothing since we, I didn't realize at the time when we put this on the agenda last month that we even had this policy. But this is the, what was given to us from Homeland Security, FEMA and GMA approved. And we adopt our EMA, local EMA people adopted it and then sent it back through the, the ranks to GMA and FEMA. So this is what it is right now. It can be amended because of course we're the governing authority and we can amend it. Our buildings and we can do what we want to. It came up at an event at one of our storms this past March, February, March. Um, where we had uh, some questions about wanting to bring their animals into the animal shelter, uh, into the uh, storm shelter. Storm shelter with them. And I get that. People are passionate about their animals. But if they're not crated, and even if they are crated, how many crates can it hold? How many adults or children can't fit in because there's a lot of crated animals? I, I get it. It's a passionate issue. But and, and if you take your animal and you hold it, or if it's a service animal, there's all kinds of laws pertaining to that. So it's, it's not as simple as, as we think. And so let's just take a look at it and decide if we want to do anything at all. Anybody got any questions or?
Well, I have, I mean, I just have mixed, of course, I'm an animal lover. So it would be um. Like if we didn't do aid animals and we, like, how would you decide which one?
Yeah, how would you?
Bring my donkey. My donkey's my best baby. So like, that wouldn't fit in there. So, you know, I understand like service animals, but you know, there's just, it's.
Well.
It's a hard one.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. That's a hard one for me.
I understand.
My only other thing that would, in my opinion, to think about is the way the shelters are set up. There's three sections. So maybe due to allergies and how somebody reacts to an animal, you may want to contain them to one end of the building, not let them be, be sprawled out through the whole building.
Yep.
That would be my only other thing.
And it would just be a service.
Service animal because, I mean, I may have a hundred thousandth of a horse that I want to get inside it. Don't get blown away. I mean, like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
I lived in Kansas for a year and we had to go to the storm shelter so often. I was exhausted. I was tired. I was, I was working and trying to get my master's degree. And then he said, Bob, we gotta go. I said, babe, I don't care. I'm gonna die. I'm not getting out of this bed. Well, on, and, and on the other twelve or fifteen or thousand times I went down to those places, right? And I'm a dog lover. I am. But I, I'm here telling you, right? When everybody and their brother starts bringing those dogs to those things, right? It ain't a good thing. You know, and no matter, I used, you know, now back in my day, we didn't have service dogs for everybody and their brother, right? You know, we didn't have morale support dogs and all that kind of stuff, right? But, you know, I'm not a big fan of, I love dogs. I've got four of them, right? Love them dearly, right? But I, I could, I can, I can understand myself if biscuit and gravy, right? Brownie and coffee, your butt's gotta just stay outside and I'll see you when I get home, you know? I, I'm not a fan of bringing animals into storm shelter.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I'll tell you, biscuit and gravy is the name of your dogs. Yeah, okay. Well, I wasn't sure. Just making sure. I mean, I like biscuit and gravy, but.
Yes, I will.
I thought we were serving biscuits and gravy.
If I have matching dogs, I give them names that go together, okay? Coffee, Brownie came together with us and Biscuit and Gravy do. So it's a good thing. All right?
Right. No problem.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Philip or Dr. Paul, anything?
If we're gonna allow them in, if a human comes in and needs a spot, something goes out.
Yeah, okay. All right. So let's just table it tonight and take a look at it. And y'all let me know in the next month or so if we need to do anything. All right. Number eight, uh, North State Historic Survey. Donna could not be here. Uh, she's had some illness and, and we need to remember Donna, but she's getting better every day. Uh, I knew she got, she's getting a little bit better because she called me the other night and I like never got off the phone with her when I, and I love Donna. So I listened intently at what she had to say. But so I knew that things are improving. Um, we did have what's called the North State Historic Survey conducted. It took um, about seven, eight months to complete on the north end. This one went a little bit faster than Trenton, uh, when we did it about three years ago prior to COVID, if BC, before COVID. Uh, we had one of Trenton and then we moved north from the Trenton boundary all the way to the state line. From Lookout Creek over to uh, fifty-nine. The next section that will be taken, and she will, will come and talk to you about that and also bring you a bound copy. We're just waiting for her to do that. And uh, it's not probably something you want on your coffee table at home, but hey, it's a little bit easier to read than the first one. They're getting better. Uh, the next idea is to go south and then we'll have pretty much the whole valley. So we'll go to the Alabama line from the sou, southern uh, line of Trenton and all the way to the Alabama line. Again, for probably I fifty-nine over to Lookout Creek. And then at some point we'll take Lookout Creek all the way over to Walker County. And then um, the interstate over to the top of Sand Mountain to the Alabama, Tennessee or Alabama line. So um, though it's gonna take about, we, we estimated originally, Audrey, what about ten years we, you know, to kind of conduct this? We didn't really think it would take that long, but because of COVID, it may actually take ten years to do this. And once all of the historic surveys are completed in Dade County. And as long as we maintain our certified local government status, uh, then it opens the door to a whole nother uh, opportunity of grants. That's, that's the goal. You can't, there's certain grants that they won't allow us to apply for until the entire county's been surveyed. And so it's good policy on the state and it's called SHPO. And I'm, I can't remember what SHPO stands for. There's too many acronyms in Georgia. But it's the State Historic Preservation Office. I think that might be it. And so um, so anyway. That's, that's the, that's kind of what we've been wanting to tell you all about that last month and this month. And when Donna feels better, she'll be back with the actual bound copy. We've already heard from the corner. Number nine, we'll move on down to ten. And that is the overlooked materials proposal. Melissa's gonna talk to us about that.
Okay. Well, um, I went today and uh, viewed their process and I don't think we got these on um, the inter, internet yet. But these were just pictures that I took um, with the recycling of the glass. Oh, Kerry's great. Was it Kerry?
Yep.
And um, so we, I mean, we discussed, he, he gave us a bunch of plan, like different choices that we could make. But I feel like at this point in time, uh, the county is not needing and doesn't want to um, spend any money further on anything. So what he's gonna do and, and he'll send over the, the contract and we'll talk back with him uh, probably next week. Is uh, go with the, the uh, process of him putting a dumpster. It'll be small, kind of more of a smaller trash can, be yellow. And um, he'll have a whole board there that says exactly what to do. And you will take home a uh, yellow container and pay probably a monthly fee um, personally to him, to his company. And uh, when you're ready, you take the, the container home. And then when you're ready to recycle, just like any other time, you would dump it. Um, and he, and there'll probably be a lock on it. Um, and we'll uh, it won't cost anything. The only thing that will ever happen will be our employee would have to hand somebody a new container for, if they sign up for the program. Um, so it's all dealt through him, through his company. Um, and it's pretty, it's pretty fantastic. He is a super go-getter. He's got a, a grant already for, that's coming and he's gonna be able to take Styrofoam. And uh, so right now this is his uh, glass little portion. And I just took a few photos. Um, but the magnitude of what this glass turns into is what is really makes you want to take glass and recycle. So um, this glass is going into uh, uh, sand, like making sand stuff for kids. It's not, um, which I have an example. Um, and this is kind of a bigger.
Don't drop that.
I know. I know.
We'll get a broom.
Uh, we might need a vacuum. Um, and this is just an example of, of what it, what one size is. So there's, there's um, size all the way down to smaller than uh, a sand, play sand that you get, you know, purchased. So uh, definitely check that out. If anybody wants to take some home to get you to go recycle, um, please take some. Show your kids, tell your friends. Um, there's a few bags here. Put some in your pocket. Um, but also what is a really cool thing is um, they're doing it for uh, mulch purposes. So they have a bigger, a bigger piece, I guess you would call it. Um, they're putting it in countertops. They're putting it in concrete. They're putting it in asphalt. Um, and he is out there getting the business. So it's not something that we would sign up for in six months or something. It would go away. So I think he's really, he's really working hard. So I'm, I'm definitely for it, but I just wanted to discuss it publicly and also with the commission, um, just to get everybody's feedback. But I'm definitely a go.
So this will be an individual citizen's decision?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll, uh, okay. And this is for glass. If you didn't catch the glass recycling uh, of any kind of color, size, whatever. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
They don't, this, you know, some places.
It needs to be cleaned and it, he's uh, you know, wine bottles or things like that that have um, paper on it. It, his machine actually processes that, which is really amazing. Um, so it, it doesn't have to be like back in the day, scrape all the paper off and everything. Just, you know, rinse it out for him. Um.
Okay. So.
How to be crunched up or anything. I mean, you're just taking off whatever.
Yeah.
Right.
You get a, a little container. You could kind of see in the, the background, there's all these little yellow.
It's like a ninety gallon.
Yeah. And then it's like a, a yellow tub about this big. So you just put it in the back of your car. Um. It, they used to put them in your front yard, you know, if you lived in the city, which we've never had that in the country. But um, and he's thinking about going back to that for uh, different areas. But um, and then he'll have the, the whole thing of, of barcode there. And then you click on that and then it'll be a service that you could sign up for. So it's all through his company and his.
I think since it's an individual decision for our citizens, I, I, I could support that. Yeah.
What about on the, once, say the bins get full, does he come pick them up?
Yes.
So the only thing that would cost us would be the little bit of time of transferring the money that. that's paid to us to get shipped to him, is it?
Nope, none.
Changed there too, okay.
Yeah.
Cause it was looking like it was.
Yeah, that's a different proposal, I think.
That's a different, yeah, he has different levels that, you know, if we see, oh my gosh, you know, our citizens are loving this, we're having all these, you know, people recycle, um, which for me, you know, it's always kind of an argument of this is a service, it's not, you know, we're never, you're never gonna make money off of recycling, but you're, you're gonna save, you know, things are, things are changing, China doesn't take our, our garbage like it used to. Um, you know, the government's changing where we're trying to do things, uh, in the USA and I think it's a great thing for us to learn how to take care of our planet and our, you know, so.
Well, I appreciate you going over there and tracking this down because we had talked about it before.
Yeah.
Right, and I think this is a, you know, when it's an individual decision by the citizens to participate or not, right? I agree with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yep.
Yeah, um, and I'm not, I'm not stopping, so I mean, uh, he does, he is eventually gonna do a Styrofoam. Um, if I could talk him into anything else.
So, he offers these containers to people at home for a fee, they can have it at their home.
Yeah, and he said.
It's up to them to bring it down.
Yes.
To deposit into the recycling center.
Just like normal, just like they do with anything else that they have. Um, and we did kind of, we still kind of have to go, a little discussion with, I, I think he's kind of workable on the fee that he's gonna charge and he said, he felt like anywhere from three to seven dollars. So, and, and he actually told me how much one single person of glass that they make in a year and I left it in the car. So, uh, that was an interesting number because if we have those people making that and that, that service will, will definitely be wanted, I think, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing that, we'll move on down, uh, we've already talked about eleven.
Oh, I did wanna mention that, you know, if we do go with this, um, he's willing to, he's probably would be willing anyway, he's a really nice guy, but if we wanted to do like a little garden or a little stepway or something at the courthouse or out here or, he would just, he would do it for us.
Okay.
So, he would bring the glass and, um, it's a really, and he's also willing to do, uh, have the schools, uh, I was gonna contact the schools, he will do free, um, field trips for kids, which is fantastic to me because if they learn and then they tell their parents and convince them to do things, then we get more glass to send out to countertops and concrete and roads and.
Jenkins Park has been made out of recycled tires, you know what I mean, so, you know, like, you know, I read that during a hundred something visits I've been there, you know, with Kaden, you know, so, so, I mean, there could be positive things that come out.
There is, I mean, and you could, you know, a- anybody could try or contact me if you're listening and you wanna check this out, I'll, I've, I've got a few bags in my car, so. Um, but I didn't wanna carry all of them and I got different grades of, uh, the substance, the glass, so.
Who is he, Cherokee?
Um, he, he, uh, his, his name's Morgan, but, um, Morgan Hall. Um, and the company is.
Overlooked materials?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And it's all in that, uh, brochure, where, did you receive that?
It's online.
It should be, it should be there now.
It's online, but I can print you a copy, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, number twelve that was added, we're gonna discuss the fire services agreement. So, some of y'all may or may not know that Dr. Pullen, in the past, before he served as a county commissioner, he was, he was and still is our, um, what are you, I forgot, it's the emergency services.
Medical director.
Medical director. Day County, uh, not all counties do this, but we hold our, uh, emergency services license for ambulance for Day County and it's a zone such thing that, that, that counties can do. So, all, our zone is the entire unincorporated area of Day County and I say unincorporated, it's the whole county, incorporated and unincorporated. And so, uh, he had a few concerns because there was a part of this, we did pass this recently at a special call meeting, uh, the, the current fire services agreement and it basically is a two-year agreement, one year at a time that renews automatically. But, there was some language that was removed, um, and we had a meeting about that yesterday and, and I'm gonna have to call on Robin and Dr. Pullen to kind of explain that a little bit to, to everyone cause I can't do it. Uh, I could try, but I'd just confuse everyone, so, yeah, I wanna try, attempt to do that and I'm not.
I'll try and Dr. Pullen can clean this up when I finish. So, uh, yes, so there's some provisions they're dealing primarily with, uh, uh, what, if any medical care, uh, that the fire departments are authorized to handle. And, uh, so the way that it was wrapped, there were some issues raised about that and I think just the question weren't further looking at that before we, we, we sent them up final for, final approval by the fire department. So, uh, I, I think where we are is we're gonna look at some of the language there and see if it needs to be modified to whatever degree and to address the concern in different ways.
Well said. It, it has to do, uh, it says fire and rescue and medical services may be required and to what level i- is it gonna be, is it gonna be first aid or you're gonna be intubating and treating seizures and, Kyle Gross and Alex did some studies on the fire calls and probably half or more involve medical stuff more than they involve fire code, fire. So, it's just trying to clean that up and dress it up, um, what, what they can do, once you start above first aid, then you get into degrees of licensing with the state of Georgia.
Right.
And we also had the regional, uh, EMS man up here to talk with us and help clarify those questions.
Right.
So, that's what we're gonna revisit again, if I got it kinda.
So, prior to this agreement today, um, we had language in there that was declarative, meaning it was, uh, talked about EMS and trauma to provide pre-hospital medical care. And when you, like he said, when you get above first aid, you know, it, we would, you'd think just put, giving someone oxygen would be okay, but it may not be okay. I mean, there's levels called EMR, EMT, EMT intermediate and, uh, an AEMT and I have no idea what all these mean, but anyway, we got plenty of people in the room that do, uh, and then paramedic. And so, every one of those people hold different license and, and degrees of acuity based on what their medical need may be. But, you know, a firefighter that's trained to put homes out, a house fire out, may not, they may have some training, but, and there's always the, the need for first aid, of course, to render first aid, CPR and, and whatever. But, when it gets above that first aid is where it gets tricky, especially in medication. And so, if somebody starts administering drugs, then it, it falls back on the medical director because he's the one that has to sign off on this stuff. And that's the, that's the, the concern, uh, you know, so, we, we extracted this out of the agreement, thinking it would limit the liability, but if, if a firefighter goes into a situation and doesn't know or abide by that and, and it's very possible that would happen, okay? In fact, it's probably probable it would happen.
Yeah, well, they know CPR, so.
Right, well, above and beyond though is the problem.
Yeah.
That, and it would be hard not to keep someone alive, even though you may know how to do it, but you're not qualified to do it.
Yeah.
Um, so, it just opens up a liability that we feel like we need to address. Did I say that okay?
No, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a set of perfect.
I just gonna say like actually you mentioned, oxygen, oxygen is a drug.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we just need to clarify where that goes.
Right, right. So, we feel like we need to have one more go with this, um, and it will probably require us to have a special call meeting. I spoke with Rodney Ross earlier today and he agreed to a special call meeting, um.
During the day.
During the day, at the request of our vice chairman. And so, uh, so we'll work on that.
Thank you.
And, um, in the next thirty days or so to try to accomplish that.
Who's working on that, like who's, who?
We.
You, you would be an expert, right?
Yeah, I think we need to get together as a group, all of us, a special call meeting.
Like, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I know, but, but in order to not break sunshine law, we need to have the opportunity. If you wanna, if you can't be here, I understand, but, but we need to try to come together along with the fire chiefs and then whomever else, uh, ambulance folks, paramedic folks, EMS folks, and then just to discuss it and try to give the attorney enough information to draft this in a le- in a legal format, so.
So, I'm just reading, yeah.
To edit our fire services agreement.
Right.
And it could be an addendum, we're thinking maybe it possibly is just a separate document.
Yeah, because there were questions that if they could do CPR, then they could just go on that call, correct? Is that what we're talking about?
What was the question again?
So, if, if a firefighter had a CPR and there was just a call that was made that was, help me out.
Well, uh, so, when they do medical calls, uh, for a response, depending on what it is.
Right.
Uh, sometimes fire services show up first before the ambulance.
And that was what brought this.
Yeah, yeah.
Question about, because they, can, can they do CPR and is the question? And then I think that they would be able to, to have that call, cause they get called and then also the call goes to EMS.
What goes out, I think, probably everybody at one time, based on what the need is.
Everybody?
Yeah, whichever call is.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just sometimes they get there, they may not know, uh, what the situation is to.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
So, anyway.
What to be focused on.
We're just trying to clarify a little bit more and, uh, maybe actually add an addendum to the, to the document. We'll, we'll determine that for the meeting. Okay, any other questions?
I've got one, not about that, but before we close out.
Okay, so like, I think we're done with that.
On our, on our splosh money, like tonight, we spent a hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven forty, roughly. If there are any way to project or have a line item to where we can see what we, we're projecting, what we got coming in, what we spent.
Yeah.
To know if we're, where we're at so we can budget, we can do it.
We've done that before, uh, it's just a document that we don't update all the time, but towards the end of a splosh, which is where we're entering into, the last two-year period.
We've got two projects that's pretty big, heavy hitters that we kinda need to start.
That's right.
Looking at what we think we're gonna have.
We, we've been fortunate enough to hopefully answer this question easier. We've been fortunate enough to bring in, uh, money and, and keep it in an account so far that I feel pretty comfortable, we've got enough, I think, for the, we'll know after we get the bids back on the elections building, but then after that, uh, we may even have enough almost accumulated for the animal control center. And, uh, so, but we'll see on that one, you know, I don't know, because there's always this, you know, road paving, yada, yada, whatever comes up as, as stuff happens. And so, um, but we've been fortunate not to have any major accidents, catastrophes, weather-related events that's prevented us from continuing down the path of getting these buildings done and completed, just like the old courthouse. So, uh, yeah, but we can, we used to do that, we've done that on the, I think, the last two splosh. It's just one of those documents, hard to update all the time, but towards the end of a splosh, it makes sense to do that, so sure. Any other questions?
I like it.
No pressure on that, what kind of a timeframe could we do?
Uh, well, I don't know, we're in the middle of budget right now, the general fund budget, so, I mean, sixty days? Yeah, within the next sixty days, hopefully we can do it within the next month, but, um, yeah. All right, hearing no other business, let's take a ten-minute or five-minute recess and, uh, we'll come back here about seven twenty-five or so, seven twenty-six.
I'll take my.
Meeting to order. This is the Dade County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It's hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask the clerk, uh, actually, before we do that, I'm going to ask for Brother Jerry Atkins, our chaplain, to come up and lead us in the invocation, and then I'll ask, uh, Commissioner if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Our heads, please. Father, we're so thankful for this day that you have given us to experience your love and your peace toward all men. Lord, I pray, as I've listened tonight, all of these requests remain to our county. I pray that you'll give wisdom and common sense to these commissioners as they, uh, go or walk through these requests, that the answer will please you and benefit Dade County. Thank you again for the privilege to be your chaplain.
All right, everyone, please rise, hand over heart. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Before we get started, I'd like to say condolences to Brother Jerry, his brother passed away this past week, and so we just, uh, would like you to know that. Thank you. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice of this meeting was given in the legal organs of Dade County. It has been posted in the hallway of the administrative building. At this time, I'll call the roll and have it recorded by the clerk, Dr. Pullen.
Present.
Mr. Hartline.
Present.
Mr. Woods.
Present.
Mrs. Bradford.
Present.
And the chair is present. We have a quorum and therefore a legal meeting. At this time, we'll, uh, I think we have the citizen's participation, and we do have Mrs. Audrey Clark, who signed up. So, come on up, Audrey.
Hi, y'all.
Hi.
Happy May twenty-five, too, by the way, everybody. Made it, May twenty-five. Uh, I'm just here to let everybody know and our community know that the Bank of Dade is offering a free shred day. And, uh, I think Sandy touched on it, but it will be May tenth, that's a Saturday, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, from nine till twelve. And it's down at our main, or the bank, uh, which is in the grocery shopping center down here in Northern Trenton. A couple of questions that have been asked, is there a limit? Well, no, not exactly, but, you know, use some common sense, not fifty-gallon buckets and, and all that kind of thing. Maybe, we usually say three boxes, up to three boxes. You do not have to remove staples, um, just don't use the binder clips or any of that. That will not go through the shredder, but you don't have to take everything apart if they're stapled or that kind of thing. Y'all have any questions about it?
Yeah, what's the hours for that?
From nine till noon on Saturday, the tenth. And we do have it posted out there as well, but it is free. It's just a way we're trying to offer to help people protect their identities and their information, because as we know, all out there, people are lurking, trying to find the... And so you can rest assured, once this is taken, once this is shredded, nobody can access it that way.
Okay, that might be somebody I need to talk to.
Oh, yes. I'll get your contact information. And again, it's free. It's free to our community, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one else signed up tonight, but we're, this is kind of a new process, so would anybody else like to speak before the Board of Commissioners? Okay. At this time, I will call upon each commissioner to make a point of personal privilege, Commissioner Bill Pullen.
Thank you. Several, several little things, and my mind jumps around at times, and, uh, y'all just bear with me, but my hand-eye coordination and where my brain goes is not always in the same direction. So, just some housekeeping things, uh, the Dade Water and Sewer met this week, and the, uh, project with the, uh, line around by Vanguard and Trenton Press and, uh, will start, uh, June twenty-fourth, and then that same contract goes around, and it will start the line running from Highway eleven up two ninety-nine and across Interstate fifty-nine. And, uh, you can get on the Water Authority's, uh, website, and, I mean, it may not be posted today, but there will be some, uh, things on there about fluoride in the water. And, uh, it's not really up to them so much as it is other authorities, so just a point of, uh, community information. Next slide. Here are the, uh, the totals of calls to our emergency services, fire agency, uh, sheriff's office, Trenton Police, Drug Task Force, Georgia State Patrol. Always like to look at these, because there are so many. I, I still think it's mind-boggling, but just for your, uh, perusal. And I think in the workshop, I noted that a lot of the fire department calls have, have medical problems also, high for more. And, uh, County Executive and, uh, Commissioner Bradford and Woods and myself, uh, we were in Savannah part of last week, uh, in the weekend, and here's where my mind kind of starts running around. So, y'all bear with me, and I'm going to try it all together. But, uh, I took, uh, a full day of classes for, uh, economic development and, uh, public safety and public health. And, uh, so, uh, I'm going to try to tie a lot of this together here for you. If I can get this pulled up. So, uh, there, as you know, hurricanes have laid out all across Georgia and did terrible, terrible, terrible economic... One of the biggest, if not the biggest, thing that's ever been, and when you start getting down below Dublin on I sixteen, you begin to see some of the stuff that, uh, Georgia Power and Transmission, they had ten thousand linemen when the hurricane hit. And after the severity of it came up, they had twenty thousand linemen trying, trying to restore power. And, uh, it, it's actually just amazing how quick they got, got power restored to most people. But the, the biggie thing out of it, and we've had tornadoes come through Dade County, is for a state of... If the governor declares a state of emergency, we need to have all our requests for aid and things go through our local emergency management agency, because that's how we get paid. If you don't go through that, we don't get paid, and some counties had five million dollars or so that they're not getting paid for because they just did it directly without, uh, going through the emergency management. And, uh, several things came out, and, uh, counties are required to have a public health department, but we're not required, uh, to have, uh, required to have a public health department, but we're not required to have EMS. And, uh, there are several things in there, uh, but those are just, just some things in there, about what we have and what we don't have, or we don't have to have. And I've got a whole list. But EMS is, is expected by the citizens. Counties are mandated to fund, uh, courts and judicial systems, the sheriff, healthcare care for inmates, coroner, medical examiner's office, and pay for barrel and cremation of paupers. Could you have next, that'll be next slide, please? So, as you're going down there, and you see this new automotive manufacturing plant on the right, it go, you go forever. And, uh, it's a, and that may be on the, right there. It's a, it's a huge investment, a huge, huge investment. It's twelve point six million, eighty-five hundred new jobs, and I'm not expecting that Dade County is going to get anything like that. But, uh, the indirect jobs and stuff, uh, we do need jobs in Dade County. And, uh, the, uh, the Eugene-Talmage Bridge down there, they're raising it like twenty-one feet, replacing the cables. Savannah is, is our port, and this is going to allow mega, mega tankers to come in and bring in stuff from different countries and, uh... But all of that, not all of that, but some of it's going to come up here, and we have the rail yard in Murray County. So, we're going to benefit from things down in there, uh, that, that start down there. And, uh, for economic, uh, stability and diversification, uh, coming back to Dade County, but the, the key point, or not a key point, but one that got repeated during that, and this was like a whole day, whole course, is you don't eat the fruit today, you plant the trees, or plant the seed. And things like what the Alliance for Dade and what the school system does, you have to start somewhere with these and plan, because when these companies come in and won't, want to, uh, come to Dade County and they start feeling sad, you may not have it twenty-four, forty-eight hours to reply, or they move on to somebody else. And, uh, I was talking with our school superintendent here today, and these are, these figures on the percentage of children are on free or reduced lunch. And a lot of that has to do with economics, not all of it, and there are those that could, could, uh, get on these, but they don't apply. But the, the total for the school district, and this is more than Dade County, is fifty-nine and a half percent are on a free or reduced lunch. But jobs would help in Dade County, and, uh, so, uh, you've got this auto plant down in, uh, towards Savannah. Kubota's got a big presence over in Gaines, in around Gainesville and Hall County and Jeffersonville. And communities that are investing in economic development throughout Georgia are the ones that are thriving. They, they've got the, the benefits. And, and the key benefits of economic development are job creation, retention, wealth creation and retention, uh, growth of the tax base, reduced property, and increased quality of life and economic stability. And when people start looking around, their first consideration, uh, is quality of life. And I think we have that in Dade County, if we can find the right people at the right time in the right location in the county. And for eleven years, Georgia has been number one for industry, and it's had a growing population. And the energy and labor cost when, when companies are working, uh, trying to find a location, energy and labor costs are, uh, are what they're looking at primarily. So, I hope that wasn't so much I got it all confused, but kind of what, what folks are looking for. Any questions?
I just got a, I, I just have a comment. When I was on the school board, we were well aware of families that did not want to fill out the paperwork for free and reduced lunch. And I just want to tell, if anyone's watching, there's no difference when your child goes through the line, all they do is walk up and give them their little number, right? No alarms go off, no, no, there's nothing to indicate anything, right? It just goes up there, you know, like three, six, zero, two, six, or whatever their number is, right? And they, they pop it in, right, and they go on, right? And, you know, and it's the same thing, like if a parent sends in money and says, I want to pay for my child's lunches, and here, here's fifty dollars, that'll last for a certain amount of time, and that amounts deducted just by putting that number in. So, there's no visibility, and I ask everyone, you know, if you happen to be watching us tonight, right, and you need help with free and reduced lunch, by all means, please, please fill out the paperwork.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Mr. Hartland.
All right, so for mine, we're gonna go down to electrical inspections first. In March, we had six new construction. He told last, you know, last month, but then in April, we had seven. So we're still building new houses. We had four temporaries and then the next month, we had six more temporaries. So for the total in March, we had 19. We was up to 24 inspections in the month of April. And that's just for electrical, that's no septic or anything else. So Stacy travels a pretty good bit across the county. But that shows us that we're still, people are still building in the county and we're still, the population's still growing. I don't know how to, I don't know what we can do to get the state to understand that for us, but do a better job of getting the people to fend out our census so we can get our numbers like we need them. Go to the next one. We have Antique Alley coming up at the sports complex. We've got spots available. Brandon lines them off. They're down at the end where the soccer field is at. We charge $20 for the whole, the weekend. The spots are 30 feet wide. If you're looking for a spot, give him a call. And basically that fee pays for the supplies that's used in the bathrooms and picking up the trash after everybody's gone from the Antique Alley's over with. The reg baseball's finishing up. Our All-Stars next week. They did have a tournament. They had about 20 teams that participated. We had rings left over from last year, I think is what it was. And the new guy over, baseball called and we donated the rings to them because our tournament didn't make. So we was able to provide the first place and second place teams in that tournament with rings. They were really excited about that. Soccer's finishing up and they've held a tournament that had over 30 teams in it. But you take 20 teams on that baseball, 10 or 12 kids per team. And there's 200 kids there at that time, plus parents. So you end up with between 700 and 800 to 1,000 people there on a tournament. So that brings a lot of people into the county. Going into the next one. Last week, they had a meeting for the Community Force Project that we're working on. There was a lot of people there, was very interested in it. It was a really good meeting, I thought. We're two-thirds of the way there on funding as far as being able to do the project with our grants. They're working on the second round and their goal was to try to finish up spring of next year and be able to start on trails if it all comes together. There was private money there and that was interested in the project. And to me, it amazed me how many people that was willing to actually take time and put money into a project like this, like private money, not citizens' money, just their money that they were willing to put into this project. That's all I have on that. Now if you go to the other slide, the other sections of slides. So about a year and a half ago, I brought it to the attention of the citizens about Davis School and the building that was not being built. So I wanted to come back and give a shout out to Davis, or to the school system and the school board. Because these are, I done a walkthrough with the superintendent. These are pictures of the school. And this was probably a month and a half ago when I was able to meet with him and walk through the school. This is letting you see as you scroll through the pictures. That's the, that hallway there, that is the interior of the school system. The floor is concrete, the blocks are filled, and the roof is poured. So that is an actual storm shelter for the kids at the school system. When it's all said and done, the kids can get in that hallway. And that is a storm shelter for the kids at the school.
Great.
From my understanding at the time of being there, they probably are real close to being finished up with that project now. So I just wanted to let the citizens see that if you don't go to the mountain, go to San Mountain or District 2, that lets you see where they're at on the school system. And if you go to, keep scrolling down, go to the one with the yellow jacket on the front of the picture. I thought this was really neat. They've got this wall finished now, but they removed the old rock from the old rock building. And in between two rock columns on the front of that building, they relayed some of the old rock and there was an old plaque that went with the old Davis School. And they've got it on that wall. So you can go up and actually see the old rock and the plaque from the old school before they tore, you know, they tore the rock off the old school.
I'm glad they did that because when I was on the school board, right? I specifically asked them, right? Not to destroy, you know, when they started moving things. So you just, you just made my day about that.
The only, the only thing that aggravated me just a little bit was they let citizens come and get it. So they only had enough to do one section on that wall.
Yeah.
They were, citizens had got a lot of the rock and took home with them. They went to school there and then they put that into it to tie it.
But they put the plaque back up, so I just think that's great.
Yes, it was, it was really neat. And I just, I just wanted to say thank you to the school boards for moving forward with this project.
I agree. Totally agree.
And that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods.
All right. The regular ones, the Apple report, please. Now there's a, during the month of April, there's a lot of things going on. I, first and foremost, that we have the opening of the historic courthouse and the museum. And the thing about that was, is that we were, we brought the flags down. We brought, they asked us to come and bring the flag down while they repainted the flag pole and we did that. And then the great part about it was the day of the opening, the Boy Scouts, you know, I incorporated them into it. And they helped me raise the flag back up and that was great. I have to give the Boy Scouts a shout out because this year, the troops within Dade County are gonna help all of us at the American Legion put out the flags for Memorial Day week. And that's a huge help. It's a whole lot of flags and a whole lot of older legionnaires that could use the assistance. And the kids are all into it, so I just think that's absolutely wonderful. The Alliance for Dade, they have Eaton Greets in the top floor of the courthouse there. And I'll tell you, if you ever get an advertisement to go for that, because you hear about a lot of things that are happening in Dade County, right? Everything from events here at Veterans Park or different farms that are open and that kind of thing. So it's just been really, really great. Bill mentioned about ACC Conference. I focused on how to sustain our communities. What my expectations of that were different from what they briefed, but I still learned a whole lot. They talked to us and demonstrated what needs to happen. God forbid, if we get tornadoes here again or Hurricane Helene was to come through Dade County, right? So it was time well spent for me. All right. Kerry, if we could go to the Senior Center next, please? And everybody knows, it's located down at the Dade County Sports Complex. And you know, we've had some companies that send in donations to the Dade County Senior Center. I deeply, deeply appreciate that. All right, next chart, please? Again, let's give a shout out to the Senior Center. I'll say this every month. They provide quality of life, fellowship, nutrition, transportation, shopping trips. The takeaway from this chart is it gives many senior citizens in Dade County a reason to get up in the morning and go somewhere. And don't assume that's not important because it really is. Next chart, please? When I was there, here just the other day, they said, come on, this, you know, I've seen their garden before, but tomatoes and onions and lettuce and all, it's already been produced. And now they've got some other stuff that they're growing. And next month, I'll report on that. But the main thing about it is, is that the folks at the Senior Center enjoy working on those gardens, right? And I just think it's a very, very positive thing there. Meals on Wheels, all right? There was a meal served was about close to 800 in April. The Meals on Wheels program now served 688. And so the total number of meals, when you combine those two programs, was 1,487. And that's really good. And of course, they've got a whole variety of food there. The next chart, please? 13 folks headed to Walmart. They had a big April birthday celebration, all right? 10 folks twice a week head to Trenton for shopping. And remember, these are folks that don't have other ways to get to Trenton. So that carries weight for them. It's very, very important. And 30 folks went over to the Epicurean Restaurant there in East Ridge. I've eaten there myself a couple of times and I know that was a good meal. And of course, they celebrated Easter. All right. That's it on the Senior Center. If we can go to the TDAC slides now? All right. There you go. All right. You know, we, as y'all know, what was referred to as the Animal Control Building is now referred to as the Trenton-Dade Animal Center. I think that's a much better name and incorporates everything that's going to occur there. You know, it refers to the building which is being built over at the transfer station and the services that are gonna be provided. And just to remind everybody, we meet twice a month, the first and third Tuesdays of the month. One is down at City Hall and the other one's here in the County Commission. The last one was on 15 April and the next one's gonna be on the 6th of May. And that's the same day that we have the police recognition ceremony over at the courthouse. The planning committee, of course, has myself and Melissa Onit and Monda Wooten and Terry Powell from the city. And Don and Alex, they make sure, they give us oversight to make sure that we're staying within the ordinances that we need to. The TDAC's eventually gonna have one director and two assistants and to serve as full-time caretakers and volunteers. And I've, you know, I go to, I go to McDonald's several times a week with the Romeo Club that's retired old men eating out. And why am I bringing that out? Well, while I'm sitting there solving all the world's problems every morning, more than one person has come up to me and said, hey, Bob, when you need volunteers for the TDAC, let me know. So there's interest in there, of people willing to help. We've hired Emily Richards to be our facility manager. And Dr. Z, Jennifer Zarcor, is gonna be the vet for us as well. Education, I'll do this every month. Keep everyone informed of how we're moving along and what we're doing with it. And we also need to educate our new law enforcement officers that are gonna go on about and enforcing the ordinances we have. So we have to make sure that, right, they're up to speed and well-trained. The next thing, the committee, we're gonna be providing a list of the services being provided. So everybody will know. We're putting that together now and it'll go. I already mentioned the law enforcement spokes. People have said, well, how are you gonna operate yet? Standard operating procedures? We're developing that as we go. We have examples from many other animal centers and we're gonna incorporate them and that kind of thing. So that's great. Now, questions will come in to me, city, county, financial support, how much, who pays what? Well, this is being addressed as we put together the intergovernment agreement between the city and the county. And we're gonna be addressing that all the way across. Next chart, please? There you go. Right. The IGA is being developed. The request for a proposal will be providing the necessary info on cost and the amount the city and the county each will be contributing. We're putting together a 501(c)(3) to make it easier to use money that people donate. And for whatever it's, state, retired Senator Jeff Mullis has agreed to donate $1,000 once we get it set up. So that's really nice. And the city and the county are supporting this project by using SPOSS funds. And they're also addressing support for the staff. The construction, like, you know, the RFP outline has been done, but we gotta get feedback on mechanical, electrical, and plumbing cost. And once we know that and we, all of the mechanical plans are approved, right? We'll be voting on that. Next chart, please? The other day, I was, I was at a meeting for the 4th of July celebration here and Monda Wooten was there and she said, Bob, I want to show you something. You got time? I said, sure, let's go. Oh my gosh, she took me over to the building where all sorts of stuff is there. Tyler Hughes bought and donated beds that cost $1,500. Miranda Lambert's Foundation donated $5,000. Mut Nation, right, they bought 3,000 worth of equipment. The North Georgia Pit Rescue donated $1,200 worth of supplies. Spay Alliance donated an animal ultrasound machine. And Chewy, you know, the folks that provide like stuff for dogs and everything, sort of like Amazon, you can order it and get it delivered to your house, right? There's a room full of dog food, right, that they all donated. So I just want to give y'all an update on this, that good things are happening with the TDAC. And it's a work in progress, but it's moving along.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bradford.
Well, I have just a few things, but they're super important. We usually have our Tire Amnesty Day in May, but there was just a little bit of delay in grants. And so we're gonna go in June, so June 14th.
June 14th.
Yeah. And we have the time at nine to one, but I'll be there at eight. And we'll just go till it kind of gets slow and there's nobody coming through. And that's usually around 1:00, 1:30 too. So look, you know, keep that on your calendar because usually it's right now, but it's gonna be in June. So don't forget. And then of course, we've got the fire department, New Salem's Fish Fry. And that's always fantastic. I love taking my boys over there so they can eat. They get enough to fill them for the day. So be sure to get over there and support them.
All right.
And just a reminder, Melissa made this offer to me, offered to me a while back when she was talking about the Tire Amnesty Day. American Legion reps will be there that day. So if anybody coming through has a flag that needs to be retired, is torn, it's ripped or whatever, we'll be there to collect it and we'll
Wonderful.
And we'll probably, yep. And we'll probably take care of it for you.
Yeah. That is wonderful, thank you. That's, that made my day.
There you go. All right. Good?
Well, it is annual, Alan Bradford Tire Amnesty Day, so that would make him also proud. I appreciate that.
You got it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. It's short and sweet. We like that.
Yeah.
You're the favorite tonight. All right. So it's been an easy month. It always has been the last few months. And celebrated my first 100 days in office and that was exciting. You know, there's been a lot happened. I was able to attend the Georgia General Assembly this year, meet with legislators. If you don't go to Atlanta, they're not gonna come to you. I mean, now, I will say that. Now Mike Cameron does come to you.
Oh yeah, he was there.
Mike Cameron's here all the dang time. He was here this morning.
He sure was.
And so, but anyway, you know, if you want some grants, you do have to tend to go to Atlanta. And so spent some time down there. Other highlights, the Senior Center, you know, when Paula was there, she had a special event for seniors and invited us with David Carroll and different activities for the seniors. So we were excited to do that. And another very positive part of the 100 days was that we do have a grant writer and she's been very busy. I mean, you know, she's sought after several new grants, some older grants, some things that we do on an annual basis. And so she's been a real asset to us and the office helping locate these grants. Sometimes they're, she's found a lot of grants that really we could benefit from, but we just don't have the funds for the matching funds. Sometimes those are cash matches and it's just not feasible at the present time. But we're learning a lot through her and she's learning a lot about grants and such from the state, the federal, and also private partnerships. But one of my favorite things to do really has just been to listen to citizens. People have called and commented and needed little things. And you know, it may be a little thing to us, but it's a big thing to them. And so it could be a culvert situation, a road tile near their driveway end or whatever it may be. And so been, made myself available to talk to them and go out and visit with those folks. So anyway, mentioned Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So you know, I want to say that is a really big deal to recognize our law enforcement community. That is this coming Tuesday. Again, this will be held at the court facility. We hope that you'll be able to attend. And there'll be a lot of refreshments served afterwards. And so we hope that you were able to come and participate in that. And we do have a special presentation from Governor Kemp. So he won't be in person, but he did send a video message and we're excited about that. Was happy to celebrate finally the ribbon cutting of the historic courthouse and museum. And also, we also, the next day, had a ribbon cutting of the cornerstone gallery and gift shop. And so if you haven't had a chance to go through the courthouse, the old historic courthouse, feel free to stop by any time. Pretty much every day, you know, I know from 10:00 a.m. till about 5:00 p.m., there's someone there. Sometimes a little earlier, sometimes someone there, sometimes a little earlier, sometimes a little later, but feel free to do that. We've already taken several reservations. If you want to contact the Chamber Office there, they will, the Welcome Center, I think it's 657-4488. Many dates are already reserved for using the upstairs. That is the only available space for rent in the historic courthouse, but it's a very beautiful place and so if you think you're going to need a place for graduation ceremony or a family get-together or whatever, I think that it probably could accommodate your needs and so just check that out. And they, in the office downstairs, will help you reserve that. The, did attend the Savannah conferences with the commissioners and I attended strategic planning. If you think having lunch and getting your belly full and sitting through strategic planning is easy, I'd invite you to do so. It was very difficult at times to stay awake, but I did and I came back with a lot of great information. We, I've been through three comprehensive updates here and so it was interesting hearing some of the different strategic planning that other counties participate in and that's what attending a lot of these events is about, is us making relationships with fellow commissioners across the state, urban and rural commissioners and so it was well-attended. Also attended the Communications Conference one day that I was there and that was very interesting, brought back some information for our communications team. This week, accepted resignation for, from, and it's a retirement, it's a good resignation and this is from Dennis Kelly. I just want to read this, it's been a great, it has, let's see, let's start out. It's been a great tenure in time in Dade County, Georgia. My wife and I brought our family here nearly 20 years ago thinking it was forever. We both gave in many different avenues and volunteered in many different ways. We watched the county grow and wish the best for all here. I've accepted a promotion that requires relocation within my full-time job and we have to move within that timeframe and with that requirement, I will need to focus on that ASAP. The New Home Fire Volunteer Department has been a part of my life since I moved here. Note, only I have watched this organization grow and I've seen emergency services have an overabundant amount of change. I was given a chance to protect and serve not only the New Home Community, but all communities. Thank you for allowing me this time. I've learned many things and would be lying if I said I have not shed tears of joy and sorrow here. So, he has, that's Dennis Kelly, he was the chief at New Home Fire Department and so he will be moving to Knoxville area for a job and right now, he's released the New Home Fire Department to the fellow chief on the mountain, Mark Gibson, to run in correlation with the Davis Department. And they've already met with the state, some of the state officials and working on all that paperwork to make that all legal. So just be aware of that. We had our first mingle on the square this past Saturday and look forward to doing that again. That will be every Saturday, right out here at the gazebo. It's a farmer's market and food vendors will be there throughout till, I think, late November. So if you get a chance, if you're in Trenton on Saturday morning, stop by and check that out and maybe grab lunch. Of course, we are excited about having Tire Amnesty Day and that will be again on June 14th. The opening slides for tonight and we have Dade County Community Forest Site. We were in Savannah, so I'm thankful to Commissioner Hartline for going for us and that was, it's a beautiful piece of property. I really had no idea how beautiful that piece of property is, but it's beautiful. And so I've set in three online meetings over the last month and I think I've got two more to go for the, to get all the grant stuff situated and so we're working hard on that to get all the grants that we can for that, for that community forest site and the purchase of the property. We had the ribbon cutting again of Cornerstone Gallery and Gifts, excited about that as well as the courthouse and we had a really great turnout that day too. I just want to say thank you for all the people of Dade County that came out for the courthouse, perfect weather that day. Thank you to our maintenance and ground staff. We're, you know, if you notice, spring sprung around Dade County, it's been beautiful. And we've got a lot of pretty things out here and we're going to continue to work on our park and area. Also, our focus is going to move down to the Senior Center again on the exterior and do some much-needed improvements on the outside there. Attending many, many meetings and various events throughout the month, we won't go into that because everybody's getting tired. And the inauguration, did attend the inauguration of Chattanooga's new mayor, not new, but he won the race at 85% plus return and Mayor Tim Kelly and Gidget and Caleb and I went to his inauguration and that was a good time. Eat and greet, so we're at the courthouse, I believe they're the third Thursday mornings at 7:30, 7:45. So if you're interested in that, feel free to check that out at the Welcome Center and it was, that'll do it, that's enough. All right. Let's see here. Under appearances tonight, we will, we'll move on into that. Our online presentations are available again by the public library and as well as Sandy Watt, but we have Mrs. Laura Beth Cunningham, 4-H agent for UGA Extension, so come on. While she's coming, I'll say that they could not brag on Laura Beth enough at the state. Boy, howdy. I don't know how much you paid all those people, but they love Laura Beth.
They sure do, yeah.
Well, I'm glad they do because sometimes I wonder. So, this next month, we are finally going to welcome our new add-in, but I'm so excited to have since I've been without one for a long time. It's going to be Ms. Caroline Hurst. She used to be Caroline Wheeler, so she's local and her kids are in our school system and she is a very happy presence. I know a lot of people like to want to always smile and I think Caroline will be able to take her place and make people smile and make them enjoy themselves. Our monthly homeschool meeting is going to be May 13th at 1:00 p.m. We always alternate between an ag lesson and a science lesson, but we're going to talk about the industrial revolution this month. Ag Ventures is a program that I started with the local library probably about six months ago. These are our upcoming books that we're going to read and when we're at the library, we always do a craft that's related to the book. Come the following school year, I'm going to move this program into the school system for K through second grade. I've already talked to the librarians, so I'll go in once a month and we'll be reading the same book.
And this will be a regular part of the K through second grade curriculum? Or is this after school?
Just during their library time.
Library time, okay.
During their library time. I will go in and I will read them an ag-related book. I've kind of taken this on as my local issue because the goal of Ag Ventures is to inspire an early interest in agriculture and help bridge that generational gap that we're having with our farmers right now. The average age of our US farmer is the late 50s and then we do not have very many young farmers coming up. That is a problem that I foresee obviously for, you know, our food and sustainability, but I'm trying to help encourage our youth to explore more careers in agriculture. There's a lot of them out there that they may not be aware of, so I'm hoping to read them a book as they're younger, get them interested in it and then as they move into our 4-H age, maybe we can, you know, give them a little spark into agriculture and try to come up with that generational gap that I'm very worried about. But that is my whole goal with Ag Ventures, so that's why I'm moving it into the school Our shotgun team did amazing at district this last month. 23 out of our 27 shotgun members qualified for state that's happening two weekends from now at Rock Eagle. So I really think that our shotgun team is like making a big impact. You know, when I came almost four years ago now, came back home, we had nine members on the team. So, we actually started out with 29, we lost one to having an eye surgery and another one to like back rates that their parents pulled them out. But still, I'm pretty happy with a shotgun team of 27, so I'm very proud of them and I think they will do very well at state. So summertime's coming up and that is my favorite time when I get to do all kinds of fun stuff with the kids and take home places. I'm partnering with Renee Frank again from the high school, the FFA teacher, and we're going to do our second ag camp. It was very successful last year and it was a lot of fun. She did want to schedule it the week after I'm at Burton at Cloverleaf Camp, so Monday's probably going to be really hard for me to jump back into a camp with kids, but we're pretty excited about that. Also do many hikes during the summer. Think we're going to do three or four. The first one will be the Cravens House Loop Hike, that's kind of around the Chigamongo Battlefield. And then, they contacted me, I wasn't aware that we had a College Football Hall of Fame in Atlanta, but apparently it's quite the facility with a lot of AI-type stuff, so they talked me into bringing some kids down there this summer. So that one is a little bit more expensive at $40, we'll spend the day at the College Football Hall of Fame and then that includes a Chick-fil-A lunch. And then another hike on July 30th, that's at Gillum Loop, that's more towards the Fort Payne area. Last year at the end of our summer programs, I'd asked the kids what they wanted to do and they all wanted to go to a water park. So, the closest one is Pirate's Bay Water Park, just about an hour away over in Atlanta, so we're going to go there on July 21st, that should be a lot of fun. And then our third hike will be at Rainbow Lake at Edwards Point, which is also in the Fort Payne area. And then I brought the chicken camp back. I didn't do it last year, I switched it out for a forensic camp, which was a lot of fun, but boy, did that chicken camp get missed. So we're bringing back the chicken camp again. This is a camp that even really young kids can come to and I always hatch off a batch of chickens and they have a good time with the chicks, so we will do another chicken camp. The Tri-State Beekeepers Meeting will be Monday, May 19th at our Ag Center and that starts at 7:00 p.m. And then the Tri-State Cattleman's Association will be back in Dade County this time. It will be May 20th and if you would like them, it's going to be, you just need to call me by the 16th. I don't have a slide for it, but I gave you guys kind of a little Dade County impact flyer. Of course, they like to train you to death at UGA, so they kind of encourage us to start doing this to, you know, really get the word out of what Dade County is doing. So we have 375 total students that I serve through our facility, there's 260 in school, we have 115 homeschoolers and out of those, there's three of them that are military-connected. This last year in 2024, we did 75 hours of community service here for Dade County and when I add up our volunteer hours, we had 449 volunteer hours and if I was having to pay somebody to do that, the in-kind dollars for their donated time was $8,980. So we have a good little volunteer program. The other flyer is like the state impact, but this is the one for Dade County.
Cool, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes.
On your, on your hiking trips-
Yes.
Do you have any kids that hesitate for signing up just due to the cost? And if so, could somebody sponsor a kid to be able to go?
I know, I just thought, was thinking about that too.
Um, I don't think that's the problem. The problem with the hikes is so many kids don't like to go outside anymore. Unfortunately, that's definitely something I'm trying to work on-
Yeah.
-just to get them to go outside and so I try to encourage that with, usually I try to pick something with water so they can get into the water and then they like to do that. But usually I have a pretty good crowd for hikes, it's not bad.
Maybe if there's a scavenger hunt for an iPhone.
Yeah.
They'll all show up.
Yeah.
Playstation.
Yeah, Playstation, right. Whatever. All right, thank you. And as I said, the other two reports are online for anyone that's interested in taking a look at those. I'll now ask Mrs. Rebecca Jones, CFO, to provide the county financial report. And by the way, before she starts, we've talked about this for a couple, three months and that is no longer reading off all the-
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I've had different commissioners ask me, why in the world do we do this? I don't know. We do it because when I first came, they did it before me. So, we, you know, it's available online, all this, you know, used to not be online and now it is, so unless y'all want us to read them off, we'll just dispense with that from here going forth and you can just, so pick it up and tell us the highlights, tell us the highlights of the report.
Yeah, I like that.
The first page there shows you the account balance report for each account that we have and what that was at April 30th. I'll just go over the main three. You have the general fund balance there of $1,205,787. You have general fund certificates of deposit, $1,900,000. And you have the combined 2021 SPOLOs project and proceeds accounts, we currently have The next two pages shows your income statement as of March 31st, 2025. I'm going to go over the year-to-date amounts, the year-to-date actuals, $12,842,670. The year-to-date budget, we budgeted $12,608,962, so we were actually collected in excess $233,708. Your expenses year-to-date actuals, $11,619,696. We budgeted $11,781,184, so we're actually under budgeting expenses by $161,488. The next several pages there show your loss and SPOLOs trend worksheet since 2010. Our loss for April 2025, we collected $250,419 and SPOLOs for April, we collected $313,023. And then the next several pages goes over both the 2015 SPOLOs tracking worksheet and the 2021, our current SPOLOs tracking worksheet with all the detail included there. And the very last page is our year-to-date tax collections and as of March 31st, 25, she has collected 97.52% and that includes earlier.
Okay.
What's our budget, like on an annual basis, so to speak?
I didn't have that on my cheat sheet, hold on.
15, our total budget?
Roughly, roughly, yes.
15 million, 15 being 322.
All right, okay.
Okay. Any other question? Oh, let's see. Are there any questions pertaining to the report?
I think that was great.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented by Mrs. Jones.
I'm going to make a motion? All right, I'll second it.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. I will now poll each commissioner and have their vote recorded. Dr. Pullen?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion is passed by unanimous vote. Mr. Robin Rogers is our county attorney. Do you have any legal matters to discuss with the board?
I don't, Mr. Chair.
All right. Is there any unfinished business to discuss or vote upon? Hearing none under new business, the reading of the minutes, the last month's regular meeting and any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. The minutes are public record and available for review in the County Commission Office. The minutes are included in the consent agenda and will be considered for approval under the new business. I'll now ask the county clerk to read aloud the items for consideration on the consent agenda, please.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda as amended to add 4-F, 5-E and 12. Approval of previous meeting minutes, the review of personal status report, proclamation respect for law, joint proclamation with the Trenton-Dade Optimists Club, the Foster Care Month proclamation, National Day of Prayer proclamation, Armed Forces Day proclamation and National Travel and Tourism Week proclamation. And then we're going down to 4-F, where we are, let's see. Board appointment of Cliff Amon to the Water and Sewer Authority Board to fill the unexpired term of Tim Fowler. The approval of SPOLOs- approval of SPOSS mobile assessor equipment and license from Data Cloud Solutions for $12,309. Purchase of a vehicle for code enforcement from Moss Motor Company of $42,506.84 for an F-150 Supercab. Purchase equipment for HVAC unit for DFCS from Reeves Heating and Air for $33,566. And security cameras for the recycling center and transfer station from Intec for $21,350. And then, TAC distributor from Leboy for $75,937.50. And I believe that's it.
I believe you're correct. That's it. Is there any discussion regarding the items listed on the consent agenda as presented by the clerk? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Mrs. Knight.
Make a motion as presented.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I think Dr. Pullen beat you to the punch.
That's fine. Cool.
All right. I have a motion and a second. I will now pollute the commissioner to have their vote recorded. Dr. Pullen?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yep.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The motion is passed by unanimous vote. There's no need for an executive session. I'm not aware of one, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. I'll take a second, but we don't need it. But anyway.
All right. I'll second it.
I'm in the first one.
The meeting is hereby adjourned.